Are we?
Yeah.
Shall we get started then? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. If I can have everyone say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie?
Here.
Councilmember Boland?
Here.
Councilmember Mila Wongway?
Here.
Mayor Proton? Councilmember Emig?
We're both here.
Let's see, Emig? All right, Councilmember Correa?
Here.
Councilmember Black?
Here.
Councilmember Crable?
Here.
Leslie, you skipped Johnny.
Oh my goodness, because my pen wasn't working. Sorry about that. Johnny, Councilmember Painter?
Here.
She always gets skipped. I apologize. Let's see, Councilmember Crable, do we get you?
Yes, you did.
Thanks. Councilmember Bray?
Here.
All right, and we still don't have Mayor Renner.
And Councilmember Emig just joined too.
Got it. You're good. Keep him in mind. Thanks, Jamie.
I'm here.
Okay, awesome. The next step on, next on the agenda is we're gonna have a COVID-19 update by Deputy City Manager Tyus.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Mayor actually is not on. Mayor Proton Wulambe and and the rest of council. We do have a couple, or actually a few items to report as it relates to COVID-19 and local actions and activities. Want to let you know that the city continued its bar and restaurants compliance checks during, in the downtown over the last weekend. This was actually the second or third weekend, I believe, that we've been doing that. I think you saw reports from, from the last round whereby we, we did an estimated fifty checks. And during the last week, I believe there were three establishments who were initially seen to be out of compliance. Two of those, when we returned and gave, we had given a warning and when we returned, they were in compliance. And then the third was found to not be in compliance. That third establishment, we are continuing to pursue, to pursue court action. There was a court hearing set for, I believe, Thursday of this week, this past week, past week, excuse me. And that case was continued at the request of, of the license holder. So, over this past weekend, I believe that there were at least two establishments found to be not compliant on the first check. But when police returned, they were found to be in compliance. So again, what I believe is happening is that when, once restaurants and bars, once we let them know in some cases, they're complying. And I also believe that frankly, they, they are understanding the severity of the problem that we're facing and also that they're, they're, they're hearing the message. One of the other things that we also did was our legal department compiled a, an FAQ related to bars and restaurants and what they should and should not do. And we actually provided that to all of the liquor license holders in our community. So again, just another level of outreach. But, you know, one of the things that, that city manager wanted me to make sure that I let you know, he wanted us to share what our procedure is. And what is it, what we're doing is that we are aggressively going after establishments that are, that are seen to have problems. I mean, we are pursuing those. But we're doing that in a way while we, while not penalizing the rest of the business community that are meeting the current standards. One of the things that we've said is that, you know, unless directed otherwise, we haven't moved forward with anything to, to, to issue a, a sort of a blanket sort of, sort of rule that might penalize others who are, who are actually compliant. And so, again, we're going after those that are seen to be problematic and those that are not. We, we've been working to not, to not get them caught up in something that maybe that doesn't apply to them. Having said that, he wanted me to make sure that you understood that we stand ready to shift things if you, as a council, have another idea or a thought as to how we should go after this. One of the other things I wanted to give you an update on is ADA outdoor dining compliance. That's been a topic of discussion over the last several months, frankly, and want to let you know sort of what, what we're doing and what are the steps we're taking. As you know, we required as part of the third round of license application that establishments actually check off that they understand that they need to be ADA compliant. And they actually checked off on a series of items so that they, they, there was no missing sort of what was required of them. The other thing I wanted to let you know is that we now have three staff members who are actually going out and visiting establishments, both in the downtown and throughout the community. And what will happen is that, excuse me, my earphones. We'll have letters that actually are going out this week, giving establishments actually five days to comply. Because by now, by the third round, there's frankly, no reason that people shouldn't know what they should be doing. And so there'll be a letter going out to any establishments found to be out of compliance, giving them five days to comply. The other thing we did, as we have done on the fir, the, the last round, is to give folks a phone number and an email address in the event that they have questions. And also in the event that they want help in going above and beyond what is legally required. And so, again, that's moving forward. Letters should go out this week for any establishments found to be non-compliant with the ADA, ADA requirements as it relates to outdoor dining. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Tyus. I don't believe we have any recognitions or appointments, do we?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. So next, we're gonna go ahead to public comments. Do we have any public comments? I, I've seen one come through on email. Is anybody else on the line?
We do. We actually have two in-person public comment that we'll start with first. If we could first have Serena Fish, and then following Serena will be Scott Steimling.
And as a reminder, each of the public commenters have three minutes, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Serena, you can go ahead.
Hello, here I am again. I wanted to speak on Consent Agenda, Item H. I attended the zoning board of appeals for the special permit on the adult cannabis dispensary at 1184118 Keaton Place. Numerous things that supposedly were taken care of weren't. Number one, all of landlords and occupants were to get letters about the proposal. One of my dentists is in that cul-de-sac. They never got a letter. I think I sent you an email a few days ago, and as of 10:30 this morning, they still had not gotten a letter or been contacted. So the only way they really knew was because I told them. And I've talked to them about it. Also, on page 5A on their large forty-page something proposal, there are proposed actions near other retail businesses and separated from sensitive areas. In the 500-foot buffer zone, there are three family-oriented businesses. One of them is a restaurant, so, but the other two are family dental practices where there are children going and coming. So, and that is within the 500-foot buffer zone. Actually, it's close to about only 150 feet away, which means anyone standing in line, anyone waiting, anyone sitting in a car, the kids are exposed to it, and they're not supposed to be. One of the things they claimed that the new person wanting to use the product are women over 50. I've been out to the dispensary and other people also in Normal quite a few times. I really don't see any women out there over 50 as much as I see kids and probably 30s, men and women. So I find that hard to believe, especially in this particular area, which is college. They're planning to be open seven days, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. in a cul-de-sac. It is cash business. It's drugs. They've already been broken to, into once June 1st in Normal. And it's a magnet, especially when you put it on a cul-de-sac, where after a certain time of day, there's no one really noticing what goes on. The signage also that was put up by the zoning board, you could not read. One of the zoning people actually did the same thing as me, went out, looked at all the signs. You couldn't read them. And no one in the area read them. So I'm asking.
Serena, you're at three minutes.
Okay, all I'm asking is to reconsider and rethink it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Who do we have next?
Next up is Scott Steimling. He is also in person. And then we'll have three that are available online.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Scott. You may proceed.
Scott Steimling, Ward 5. On September the 6th, there was, the street was flooding. When the rain was coming down the hill, I've been bringing this up, and nothing gets done about it. And I wanted to know when something was gonna be done. It, I've resided there for seventeen years, and I've been bringing this up for at least fifteen of the seventeen. And, you know, the, the street has washed away. The water came, it was so bad that the water was on pretty much on both sides of the street, and you could not have gotten out of my drive if you'd had to. You know, I just wondered when this is gonna take, when the, when the streets are gonna be fixed. Totally. A little bit should have been done every year. And not, well, we'll do it tomorrow. We'll do it tomorrow. We'll do it tomorrow. We'll do it. You've always got money to give Tim Gleason a raise, don't you? But you don't have money to fix cotton picking streets. I would suggest that, you know, the city really put, take care of what they've got to take care of first, and then worry about the, the other. You know, the ADA law, that was in effect in 1990. There are still eight sidewalks that are ADA accessible. But they sure are around City Hall. Any government buildings, they are. But you get into the real world, and they're not. And I guess the thing, it's, it's absolutely unbelievable that the council thinks that, you know, they can take advantage of the taxpayers like this. And then they, to think that they can give Tim Gleason a raise when our streets are like they are? You know, it makes no sense at all. But I'm beginning to think our city management doesn't make any sense either. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Scott. So would you, City Clerk, please read the, the names of the individuals who submitted to public comment?
So by email, we had Jacqueline Byer, and her email was forwarded to council earlier today. And then we have three people online. We have, let's see, John Reed will be up first. And then following John would be Nathan Wang and then Sarah Payne.
Okay, sorry, I thought we were stopping. Okay, go ahead. I think it's John, right, John Reed?
Right.
Okay, we're ready for you, John.
All right. Hello, everybody. Y'all look nice in your matching t-shirts, except for Jan and Donna and Jeff, Mr. Tyus, Julie. But anyway, couple of things. I'm disappointed the mayor's not here tonight. Because I wanted to talk about words. I'm gonna read a list of words that were said to me by the mayor about me. Whackos, just screwed up, crazy, don't care about the facts, far-right wing, blithering, off my rocket. Actually, I think that's supposed to be rocker, but we'll let it be. Whack BS, ideological propaganda, stupid ignorance, ignorant dribble, totally and frickin' crazy, piece of work. I'll own up to that one. I am a piece of work. Lunacy, don't know bleep.
Billy? I'm sorry.
Total BS, stupid, and anything I think has to be BS. Now, the reason these words were said about me by the mayor is because I brought up some facts about COVID-19. I gave him the fact that Shayna, McLean County Board, called the governor to try to get the National Guard here to do contact tracing. That's a fact. She posted it herself. The fact that as of Saturday, we had 2,879 cases of COVID-19, five in the hospital, eighteen deaths, fourteen hundred and two people have recovered, and thirteen hundred and seventy-two are in home isolation. So that was a fact, yet I'm called ignorant, and that my facts are BS. The point I want to make is, the city is going above and beyond, and McLean County is also trying to make this into something it's not. How many businesses have closed because of COVID-19? We've got Ovation, TGI Fridays, Slim Chickens. I can go on and on with businesses that have closed because the city, in our infinite wisdom, has followed J.B. Pritzker's illegal mandates under the premise of following the money. Instead of looking out for the community and making sure businesses were up and running and earning money so they can pay their people, you have more people unemployed now. It's just really sad that you would think the mayor would have learned after his run-in with Diane Benjamin a couple of years ago, but I guess not. So that's really all I have. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, John. Who's next on the, on the list?
And sorry, I apologize. I wasn't on mute earlier. The mayor is still having trouble, just as an update, but IS is currently working with him. Next up, we have Nathan Wang. Nathan, are you there?
Hi, I'm here.
Okay, you can go ahead, Nathan.
Hi, thanks, everybody. Appreciate the city council's time here. I'm Nathan Wang. I'm the manager for New Markets for Jushi, the, the parent company of Beyond Hello, that's applying for the special use permit here to establish an adult-use cannabis dispensary in the city of Bloomington. You know, I, I just want to address some of the suspicious concerns. You know, I, I think a lot of them are, are certainly valid, that have concerns about this new industry that's coming into town. Especially, I know I kind of tried to address some of your concerns during the ZBA meeting a few weeks ago as well. But, you know, first and foremost, I just want to say that we're, we're here to really just respect what the city council and, you know, elected officials and city staff want and have already decided. I think, you know, the, the sort of issue of where this is allowed and not allowed is, is, you know, sort of already been litigated during previous city council hearings in terms of the, the ordinance that was established. And I think, you know, we've done everything in our power to, to make sure that the proposal that we submitted is compliant with the ordinance that was, that was already passed. That being said, you know, we, we do take safety, security, as well as our impact on, on the community and neighbors extremely seriously in every single community that we're a part of. You know, I think we've, if you look at our track record in other jurisdictions where we have a footprint, you know, there's always some initial amount of hesitation from the community because it is new and it is, you know, sort of scary, quite frankly, right? When you're talking about, you know, the legalization of cannabis and this coming into, to your community. But, you know, in every, every community that we've had experience, you know, after a few months, after we've established ourselves and been able to prove that we are upstanding business members and are upstanding community members, the city's really welcomed us with open arms. And I think we, we hope to do that in Bloomington as well. You know, I, I've had the chance to. I did not unfortunately have the chance to reach out to or was able to get in contact with the dental offices that Ms. Fisher referred to. But I was able to reach out to and, and get in front of and meet with many of our other surrounding businesses. And everybody I talked to, you know, I, I think was, was excited to have us in their community and in their neighborhood, excited for the, the traffic that we potentially could, could bring into the, the business community there. Excited for, you know, the addition of some new customers to, to their businesses as well. And on the safety issue, you know, I just want to address the, the break-in that occurred in Normal in June as well. That obviously happened during the protests that were very widespread to Illinois and throughout the entire country. So it was a very abnormal situation for us typically. And, and they, all they did was break a, a window to get into our front reception area. They were not able to get anywhere beyond that because we keep everything very secure under a secure vault after we close up for the night.
Your three minutes are up, unfortunately.
No, no worries. I respect the time and, and, and yeah, I respect the city council's decisions here. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, Mayor Proton, the next one up we have is Sarah Payne.
Hi, my name is Sarah Payne. I also am from Jushi, the corporate parent of Beyond Hello. And I don't necessarily have a public comment, but I did want to make the city council aware that I'm on the line and available to answer any questions that anyone may have. And just reiterate that we do feel very, very passionately about being a good community neighbor and business. We employ locally and, you know, this time that our country is in the middle of a public health crisis and we're seeing, you know, very, very scary unemployment numbers, we are hiring, you know, family-supporting wages with benefits. And we would really enjoy to be a good partner and employer in the city of Bloomington. So again, happy to take questions to the extent that any council members have some.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, and that's it for comments over via email?
That's correct. It was just Jacqueline Byer that was forwarded earlier today.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members of the council would like to pull? Can you help me, City Clerk, because I can't see right now?
Let's see. I don't see anybody with their hands up right now.
Okay, okay. Now, I'm gonna go ahead and pull item 8H. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 8H?
So moved.
Second. So moved by Alderman Bray, and second by, I didn't see that?
It was me. I'll do it.
Oh, second by Alderman Black. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
And just to clarify, we're approving the consent agenda except for item 8H. Councilmember Mathie?
Yes.
Councilmember Boland?
Yes.
Councilmember Mila Wongway?
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. The consent agenda passes. So we gotta go ahead and move to regular, regular agenda. And I guess we'll start with item eight. Did you want to say something, Nathan?
I was just gonna say you had pulled item 8H if you'd like to address that one, and we can get through it before moving to the regular.
Yes, that's what I was getting to. Okay, so I, I essentially pull item 8H because I wanted to vote no to be consistent with my previous vote. I, I don't think this is the, at the appropriate time to, to have this particular business in the community. And that's pretty much all there is to it. Are there any other comments from the council? Okay, see, none.
Sorry, Mayor Proton, Councilmember Correa has her hand up.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we approve item H as presented.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Correa, and second by, I couldn't hear?
Yeah.
Okay, second by Councilmembers Black? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie?
Yes.
Councilmember Boland?
Yes.
Councilmember Mila Wongway? Mayor Proton?
No.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Item 8H passes. So now we're gonna go ahead and move to our regular agenda with item 9A. And I believe we do have a presentation by, by this ad that we need to manage. You're muted?
You would think after several months that I would have figured that out, but I haven't. Thank you. And so really, we, we, we don't necessarily have a presentation, but more of a, sort of a recap of, of what got us here. And frankly, one of the things I wanted to say is that this item is, is, this, this is a big deal. In that, you know, if approved, it will provide staff and council frankly with a roadmap and, and, and a guide for how we want to handle downtown development. As we talked about in the last committee, at, at the committee of the whole meeting where we discussed this report, there are a lot of things that have happened downtown that maybe people didn't know about. But we also know that going forward, there are a lot of things that we want and need to do. What this document does, if approved, is to, again, provide us with a roadmap and provide us with a guide for, for what, what we would be looking to do. The other thing it does is that, as you start to narrow things down from concepts to actual sort of putting pen to paper and calculating costs for, for different projects that you will be prioritizing, it allows us to put together budgets for, for the work that is to be done. And so I, I just want to make sure the public understands how big of a deal this is in that it's, it's really giving us a roadmap for where we're going downtown. In terms of background, as you know, already know, that the Downtown Task Force report was, I believe, completed in 2017. At a recent committee of the whole meeting, I believe it was in July, council discussed this and the possibility of approving it, and ultimately decided that it was something that you in fact wanted to bring forward. Since that time, you have had conversations and have said that would be something that you would want to do seemingly, but with an updated list of the things that we've already done, made as part of, of the actual report. So this report, if approved, would be the Downtown Task Force Report updated. So Downtown Task Force Report 2020 updated, and it's updated with the list of things that have been completed. One of the other important things that are happening is that you are now working to prioritize your projects, which again, will give us more specificity as to, to where we go from here. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Melissa Han is also on the line, and she'd be able to answer any questions that you may have as well.
Do we have any question? From Alderman Mathie? I can't see everybody right now, so I'll go with Alderman Mathie.
Thanks. So, yeah, I, I brought this forward as a council initiative originally to bring this back on there. Just want to say thank you, Billy, for that summary. Thank you, Melissa, for all you've done, and Tim and everybody else, too. When I brought this forward, one of the things I had originally said is, you know, let's see if we can do this and get this passed by just taking the Catalyst Project section, which is Section 4, out of the list. project section, which is section four, out of the list or out of the report since that seemed to be the controversial piece. And what I've heard from all of you in conversations the last couple of months is that you did not want the catalyst section removed because there's still a couple of things that are listed in the catalyst section that might happen, right? You know, the original, call it controversies, surrounded the library. So just so everybody's on the same page, the library is not moving. And just in case anybody didn't hear that, the library is not moving. And I wanted to follow that up by saying the library is not moving. So that we're, you know, that anybody watching is on the page about the library not moving. But the, you know, the tier one recommendation for the catalyst project is do something with the Market Street Garage. And even if the library is not moving and we're doing something with the Market Street Garage, which we have to do something with because that structure was built the same year that I was born, which was not recently. You know, we've, or if we do something else on that list, there's still catalysts that could happen. And so you told me that you wanted to leave that in. So the motion that is coming forward is to accept the report, add on the update like Billy said, but the catalyst project will be in there with, you know, but everybody's on the same page that the library's not moving. So that's all I had to say for right now.
Okay. I think the next hand that I see, thank you, Alderman Mathie. Next hand that I see is Alderman Bolin.
Okay. Let me throw out my ideas on this. I remember when you brought forth the initiative. Tim said that it was three years old. Usually five years, things are outdated. So my thought was that this that was being brought forward would be for two years and that we might come back at the five-year mark and see where we're at and go forward from there. Now, maybe that's not what everybody was thinking, but that's what was in my head. And I still have, I still don't want the catalyst included in the project or in the packet or the approval. I, I don't see the Market Street Garage at this point as a catalyst or changing any, increasing any number of people that are going to come downtown. I see it as something very valuable as a capital project in order to provide parking, since we're probably going to be losing parking with the outdoor dining and stuff like that. The parking survey has not been completed, so I'd like to get some information on that. And as far as the Connect Transit Station, we're talking about the core. And the core pretty much includes historic buildings. And I don't see any spaces for putting in a Connect Transit Station without knocking down significant amount of historic buildings. And the one thing that I really, really top of my list is to keep that core historic. So I don't see a catalyst project being part of this.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Bolin. Do we, Jamie, do you want to respond to that or staff?
Sure, I can, if that's okay.
Sure.
So Donna, I, we've had great conversations about it and I respect your opinion on that. The cat, the Market Street Garage is not the only suggestion for a catalyst project in the report. There's actually three suggestions in there for catalyst projects. So even if the Market Street Garage is not, you know, what actually gets chosen, what happens? And maybe none of these three suggestions that are in the report. And I'm, I'm doing a thing where I'm pointing at the monitor, none of you can see over there, is, but if none of these are what we actually end up doing, that doesn't mean that the idea and the concept behind doing something is invalid. It just means that, you know, we're, and if we come back and do this in just a couple of years and do something different with this, I get that too. But the idea is that we, we recognize the need for something big and bold to happen, whatever that might be and whatever shape that might take along the way. Doesn't mean that we're beholden to do any of these particular three, just that the idea is valid. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but.
Yeah. Thank you, Alderman Mathie. I see that Alderman Black has ended up.
You're so full of Boka. Alderman Black, it sounds so much. So yeah, I know that, you know, my time here is dwindling and people's interest in what I have to say is going to exponentially decrease. But I'll just say this, as a taxpayer, it's outrageous how little we have developed downtown. And somebody who pays property taxes, sales taxes, use taxes, amusement taxes, the fact that we can't somehow find ways to leverage it effectively downtown without studying it again and again and again, we know the answer is just a matter of pulling trigger. And so I'm excited that we're pulling a trigger this evening. It's not going to make everybody happy. I continue to maintain that downtown's challenge isn't financial, it's political. And we just have to have the willpower to make the things happen. So, you know, catalyst project, no catalyst project, I mean, the Market Street Garage is an embarrassment. Not to quote the president, but it's a disgrace. You know, we shouldn't have a facility that looks like that in a key area. I mean, you go down there in any, before COVID, any First Friday, it is jam-packed. I mean, almost filled to capacity. And that's what we want to do. And the city's tasked with maintaining infrastructure. That's the basic infrastructure is where do people put their cars? So, you know, that is something that we've talked about. Let's just pull the trigger, move forward. As a taxpayer, I demand it.
Thank you, Alderman Black, for that impassioned speech. We have Alderman Bolin sitting next to us and Alderman Correo after her.
I just, I want to make it clear, I'm not against the packet as presented with the exception of I have, I have a difficult time accepting the catalyst project, especially if it's a go big or go home. Because in my philosophy with the strong towns, it's incremental, makes it sustainable, and something as small as the outdoor dining was a catalyst. So it doesn't have to be big and bold. I definitely think that the Market Street Garage needs to be done. And it could be done in the next, you know, put it in the next fiscal year. I'd be fine with that. But I don't think that, I don't even view that as a catalyst project. I think it's like Scott said, it's a, it's a infrastructure, capital, capital project. So that's where I'm coming from. I, I will support this plan, but I'm just struggling with the concept of catalysts. Catalysts to me is like, it will make a big impression fast, but sometimes that will, how can I phrase this? It's like a firecracker going off. You have a big boom and then it fizzles. So I don't want that to happen. I want it to be sustainable. And I believe incremental development is sustainable. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I think he's nodding, so he does understand. Thank you, Alderman Bolin. Alderman Correo.
Yeah, I'm just going to keep my comments short and sweet. Thank you, Scott, for that impassioned speech. I do tend to agree with Scott that the problem is political. And so I'm very excited to see us actually moving forward. And I, you know, I feel terrible that it has actually taken us this long to even adopt this plan. It's embarrassing. So really appreciate Jamie's leadership and actually getting us to this point and looking forward to like where this goes next. So yeah, shout out to Jamie.
Awesome. Thank you, Alderman Correo. And next is Alderman Emig.
Thank you. I just want to voice my support as well and appreciate that Alderman Mathie has brought this back. I hope that we can just move to some action. And I, I want to stress that the report doesn't specify a catalyst project is defined. There are examples of it, more is it necessary? And, and for me, a catalyst is, is a substance that, you know, increases rate, but doesn't, it's not necessarily a big boom. And that there are many ways that we can increase rate of development without perhaps going hog wild and creating an albatross in the middle of downtown that will, that will be counterproductive. I'm just glad that we have an opportunity to move beyond the planning, discussion of the planning and actually get to some planning, even though of course we'll have debates about what that looks like going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Emig. Next is Alderman Bray.
Yes, thank you. And I'll echo, thank you, Alderman Mathie for bringing this up. As we've talked about before, I served on the Downtown Task Force, so was very pleased to be part of some of these concepts. You know, I think that, you know, the council has approached this in this manner with due diligence. I like this, this concept that we're going to have additional work sessions and we're consensing around our priorities and submitting information to Alderman Mathie so you can put that together and share that back with us in additional work sessions. And I think that's how we work together and how we get things done. And, and we go about it in this positive manner. So I appreciate that. I, I also think that a catalyst can be something small but impactful. And I look forward to having conversation with my colleagues about what is that thing that could be small, sustainable, yet impactful. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Bray. Alderman Crable.
Just my, thanks again to Jamie, Melissa, Billy and Tim for all your work. And I just want to point out, you know, the downtown and its revitalization is important for everyone in the community. You know, whether you, you live downtown or whether you're on the east side of downtown, it doesn't matter. Because I think that, you know, if, if your community is just, well, veterans is great. If your community is just veterans, then what kind of community is that? So, so I really think that everyone's focus on downtown is a positive and I think it benefits everyone in the community. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Okay. I think we have Alderman Mathie.
I was just gonna, if everybody's good, I was going to make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Mathie.
Second.
Okay, I think I heard Alderman Correo first. So second by Alderman Correo. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bolin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milowamway, Mayor Protim.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correo.
Enthusiastic, yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Awesome. Item 9A passes. We have some enthusiastic and emphatic council members, which is great. So next on the agenda is item 9B, consideration and potential action regarding COVID ordinance 2020-18 in regards to COVID-19. I believe we do have an update. Deputy City Manager Tyus?
Thank you. This is an item that has been on, we placed on every council agenda because we realize the importance of you having the ability to amend or strike or, or adjust this. Again, it's the, the order that governs our, some of our local requirements for, as it relates to COVID-19. The only change in this item is it's a formal, would be, if approved, would be a formal adoption by you to include the suspension of the downtown shuttles, AKA the party buses. I know that those are, that was one thing that you were, as a group, seemingly adamant about, wanting to make sure that we addressed as we, as we talked about COVID-19 response, especially as the, the case numbers continued to, continued to increase. And so the only difference here is that it actually includes what we, what we moved forward with as part of a city manager's executive order, which is the suspension of the party bus license. Will we have to be to take any questions if you have any? Jeff Jergens, the city's attorney is on the call as well, as is George Boyle, I believe.
Are there any questions from members of the council or a motion?
Mayor Protim, it looks like you have Councilmember Bray and Councilmember Correo with their hands up.
Okay. Well, Councilmember Bray?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we accept this ordinance as presented.
Thank you. And is that what you were trying to second, Councilmember Correo?
It wasn't. I just want to.
Second, the member Correo.
Do you want to second first and then you can have discussion because I'll second that.
Yeah, okay. All right. Sorry, I couldn't hear very well. Okay, so we have a second by Councilmember Mathie. So discussion, Councilmember Correo.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I've gotten a lot of questions about this. I posted something on my Facebook page. I feel like I've gotten a lot of mixed reviews from folks. And so one of the things I mentioned at a last meeting with staff in a three-on-one is I'd really love to see us come back to the table at a future council meeting or at a future work session with an array of options of how aggressive we can be as a city, like what's within our jurisdiction and how aggressive we can be in terms of battling this COVID-19 crisis. From, you know, what is it that we're doing now, which have been, which have been some, some limited actions, to like, what's our, what would be our most aggressive mode? And, and then what are the places in between? Because I don't think that, personally, I don't have clarity on that and I don't think a lot of constituents do. So I've got constituents that are asking us to do things that are frankly just not within our jurisdiction. And then some of the things that they're asking for, I think are pretty easy lift. So it would be really great to hear from legal and from staff what that array of options looks like. Because I think we as a council tend to do well with that.
Okay. Go ahead. Sorry, you interrupted.
No problem. And actually, I'll start. That, Alderwoman Correo, I will tell you, that's one of the discussions that we're having, is what does that type of list look like? The other thing I want to make sure that I say is that, as I said earlier in the meeting, our approach to date has been really to, to, to address problem areas that are specific to the Bloomington community aggressively, but to try as best we can to not sort of encompass everyone in that who may not be, who may not be problem organizations. But I understand your point completely and it is one of the conversations that we're actually having about how to best come back to you with what that, with that type of list.
Yeah. I mean, it's really unfortunate that like, everybody would get swept into something because of the bad behavior of some people. But I mean, I think just the reality is that the numbers in the last couple of weeks are really alarming. And I, you know, I care about keeping our businesses open, but I also think probably this is the most difficult place that we've been as a community. And, and if we need to take strong action, then, you know, even if it's unpopular, I think that's something that we have to be willing to consider. And yes, my alarm to remember when to feed my dogs is hungry like the wolf by Dr. Andrew N. So sorry about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Correo. I think I see next on my list here is Councilmember Mathie.
Thank you. And Jen, thank you for bringing up the idea that there's other stuff. I actually emailed Scott last night because I was confused on a couple of things as well. And I had a long conversation with the McLean County Board Member today, trying to get some clarity as well. And I think that, you know, there is. And I think that, you know, there is some confusion amongst the, between the Board of Health, the McLean County Board, the city and the town and ISU in terms of what is and is not allowed, or what is and is not possible regarding stuff, right? We can go stricter than the, the governor's mandates if we want to. I got a couple of emails over the weekend where people want us to start going after and ticketing individuals that are not accepting individual responsibility, right? So far, our approach to everything has been, we want everybody to take individual responsibility for their own actions and businesses to take responsibility for their businesses. Now, we're running into the situation of what do we do when people aren't willing to accept that responsibility to be part of our community? And getting some clarity as to what is and is not possible is good. And, and I look forward to hearing that too. So, I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you, Councilmember Mathie. Next is Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Mboka. Yeah, to, to Jamie's point, you know, you guys have seen my thoughts in my emails about masks and things. And I'll just, you know, give this as an example of like, we have to have as a community a specific and measurable policy that we are implementing. So, I'll, I'll just give the example of like, people want to have a mandatory mask ordinance. Well, that means so many things to so many different people. Until we can see it in writing and understand what that actually is, then we can have an honest debate and vote on what that would be. And, and I strongly feel that, that these things that are public health related should be tied to what the town of Normal is doing. I know that they have their own issues with the students and they, they took the actions that they did. But if we're gonna do, and I'm not saying that we are, you know, this is the same thing as the library. The library is staying in its current location. We're not proposing a mandatory mask ordinance, using this as an example. At the end of the day, if we pass it and Normal does not, that does not make any sense. And then so what? You gotta figure out if you're in Bloomington or Normal, am I in the Meyer off of college? Where, that seems so goofy to me. That makes, it becomes irrelevant. So, I, I've really looked at the McLean County Health Department for policy recommendations. And if it's a question of resources, you know, do we have enough, like, I'll give you another example. Like I had somebody who told me that we should reopen all the businesses. Well, reopening the businesses, declaring that we'll reopen doesn't mean that customers are going to return. We want to have a robust testing mechanism in place. And if we need to pay for testing to bring out people to come to businesses, that to me, makes sense that the city should be involved in that. And to my knowledge, we've not been asked for any resources, whether it be people, whether it be time, whether it be manpower, logistics, to help alleviate, augment current services that are out there. So, I, I know I for one stand ready to help out whatever it would take to, to bring some sense of normalcy back to the world. But, you know, it, it seems to be really clustered at the students. The evidence is showing that it's these house parties. I mean, we watched that video of, of that YouTube. I mean, I felt really old. I never heard of these people before, but apparently they're popular. That came out and did that terrible thing by having the students go to that party. That's not, doesn't mean we should be shutting down our bars because there's house parties that are going. We have to tie these things to facts and reality. So, you know, I look forward to hearing if there's specific things that we can do that we, we can vote on. I love our process that we've outlined, that every council meeting, we address this topic. And I think it's working for us. But from a public health policy standpoint, you know, if we get a recommendation from the McLean County Health Department that says, hey, and again, not saying this is happening, mandatory mask ordinance is gonna reduce the cases and decrease our positivity rate, you should pass it. That's a much more interesting and proper way to go about this than us trying to spitball some public health policy on the fly, hoping it's going to do something.
Thank you, Councilmember Black. Next is Councilmember Bolin.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go back to my medical background and pull the medical card. I always go back to the CDC for recommendations. The Illinois Department of Public Health and the McLean County of Public Health use the CDC for recommendations. The McLean County Public Health Department issued from the State Department of Public Health recommendations that can be implemented. I believe that we should be using those. Some of them are from the governor's office, such as closing bars and restaurants at 11 o'clock. Even the party bus was listed as an option, not transportings from a hotspot to a not hotspot. I can't remember everything that's on the list, but it is available. And if that's made public to us, to the public at large, I think, I really think that education, instead of looking at Facebook, go to CDC, you know, and look at the Illinois Department of Public Health. And bottom line, the hospital numbers and the positive numbers, do, and the death numbers, do not, in my mind, indicate that we need to have mandatory masks on 24/7. I do think if you're inside where you cannot social distance, yes, absolutely. I wear a mask for, as courtesy to my fellow citizens, I show concern for the community. And that's what people should be doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bolin. Next is Councilmember Imig.
Yes, thank you. And I too am looking for some more consistency across all of our respective institutions. And would like to see a more direction from the county, not to admonish them, because I know they're working very, very, very hard to provide education and, and support around policy. But we do, with, the fact is, we do have in essence, a mask ordinance in the state of Illinois. Perhaps this is some of what Alderwoman Bolin was, was getting at. And that as of May 1st, all residents are required to wear a mask or face covering in public places and situations where you can't maintain social distancing. What we haven't, haven't seen from the state and really beyond is, is kind of what Alderman Black was referring to in terms of consequences or, and, and I, I really appreciated Deputy Manager Tyus' FAQs to businesses about how we are tightening enforcement and doing more monitoring and trying to convey that message. From my point of view, I, I think it would be perfectly legitimate even to pass a mask ordinance, only to reiterate what the state has done to maintain a social norm and expectation that, that even though this, in, in a lot of ways, this virus is insidious and invisible. And it is really hard to see the, the ramifications of it on a, on the scale of public health, unless it affects you personally, or unless it begins to spread beyond our hotspots. But it, it, it's a scientific fact. It's happening everywhere around the world. And we know what we can do to significantly control it. And, and finally, I would just urge us to, to keep thinking about ways to consistently, across all of our units of government, create these social norms and opportunities for congregating and doing things socially and coming to spaces together. We, we want to be able to do that. But how can we do it in the safest way possible? And how might the city be another arm in providing that, that opportunity? You know, whether it's passing out masks at our, the farmer's market, grab and go, or, or thinking about ways of, of hosting events where you can maintain it. And it's just a norm. It's just an expectation that, that everybody complies. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Imig. And knowing time, and we only have Councilmember Payne would like to speak. So, I think we can, are we safe? Just have her speak and then.
I'll be quick.
Okay. Okay. All right. Awesome.
I'd just like to speak to the specifics of item 9B, which is suspending downtown shuttles. It's my opinion that to pack a bunch of college students from a hotspot on a bus and take them to downtown Bloomington, where they have bars with capacity limits, and many of them may not be able to get into those bars. So, they'll be congregating closely together outside of them. I think that's just really a bad idea. And I think that we should vote yes on item 9B. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Awesome. Thank you. We had a, a, a motion by Councilmember Bray, correct? And also Member Mathie.
That is correct.
So. My name is Callie Rowe.
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bolin.
Yes.
Mayor Proton, Milowamway.
Yes.
Councilmember Imig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo. All right. Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Yeah, it looks like Councilmember Carrillo is not with us any longer. Mayor Proton.
Okay. Thank you. So, the item 9B passes. So, next on the agenda is City Managers Discussion. Deputy City Manager Tyus.
Uh, once again, thank you. Phil, looks like he's ahead of me. Before we get started with the slides, actually, I wanted to make sure, Tim Gleason, the city manager, told me to make sure that I thanked you for the approval of, of item 8G, which was the contract item. He is obviously out today, but wanted to make sure that got shared with you. And he will be reaching out to you individually as well. He said to make sure that you know that he loves working here. And that, again, he thanks you for, for, for that, that vote and that vote of confidence. The first slide is actually the, the downtown farm, Bloomington Farmer's Market, as you can see. It's being held Saturdays from 7:30 a.m. to 12 p.m. One of the things that I've heard is that, that, you know, they have a consistent stream of folks who, who are coming down there. So, it's really, really picked up if things, as things have moved back downtown. So, we're excited about that. The second slide, Phil, if you'll advance, is something that appears to be near and dear to everyone here and to us as well. It's, it's the census. We, as you know, we're approaching the, we're winding down and we're approaching the end. And so, we really, really want the public to get out and make sure that they fill out the census forms. You can go to 2020census.gov to do that. It's really quick and easy and just, we really encourage people to do that. Again, acknowledging that you're wearing your shirt, your census shirts, so the public recognizing, recognizes the importance of doing that. It means a lot to our community. Phil, if you'll advance, please. Actually, this is something else that we're excited about. I feel like I've said excited like 20 million times today. This is the Small Business Assistance Grant Program that is actually kicking off today. You will recall that earlier this year, you as a council voted to provide to, about $270,000 in direct aid to residents as part of the CDBG program. And you also voted to provide up to $150,000 for an economic, economic development program. Well, this is the second half. This is the actual economic development program that has been put together. Melissa Hahn and Austin Grammer and Jennifer Tony and, and other staff members have worked hard to put this together. It kicks off today. I believe it kicked off today. And as you can see, qualified businesses can apply to receive up to $4,500 in aid. They can apply online now at www.cdblm.org/ed. Again, that's And one of the things that, that Melissa's team and Jennifer worked to do is to really identify needs by reaching out to, to local businesses, see what their needs were. And one of the things that, that the group determined was that qualifying expenses can include rent or mortgage payments, utilities, personal protective equipment and other COVID-19 related costs. And so, again, that program is open now. So, we encourage people to visit www.cdblm.org/ed. Phil, next slide, please. This slide is actually showing the, the new employees to the city. And we have, looks like six employees who have joined the city in recent weeks. We have Emily Marshall, who is a telecommunicator in police, Derek Stevens, firefighter, paramedic, Nicholas Van Waze, who's a police patrol officer, Christian Stengel, firefighter, paramedic, Samantha Berry, who is a patrol officer, John Schob, who is a firefighter, paramedic. And so, again, we want to welcome that group of folks to city government. A couple of other items. I wanted to announce that the McLean County Regional Plan Commission is hosting a virtual listening session from 5:30, starting at 5:30 p.m. on September 22nd, on behalf of the Illinois Housing Development Authority, as part of the state's Illinois Housing Blueprint Program. The program is intended to gather feedback from residents regarding their current and future housing needs. Residents can join the virtual session by phone or by internet and can contact the McLean County Regional Plan Commission for additional information or visit ilhousingblueprint.org. Again, that's ilhousingblueprint.org. And finally, I, I wanted to announce something that's actually kicking off tomorrow with one of our community business partners. The state of Illinois and Ferrero USA will host a three-day mobile, mobile free COVID-19 testing site outside of the Ferrero USA facility at 2501 Bike Road in Bloomington. This will be a drive-up testing site and it's open to Ferrero employees and members of the Bloomington community of all ages. The site can accommodate 300 tests for the general public per day. And the dates and times for testing are as follows. That's Tuesday, September 15th, from 5 a.m. to 1 p.m. Wednesday, September 16th, from 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. And Thursday, September 17th, from 6 a.m. to 2 p.m. And there was a release that went out today. And, and one of the things that the city manager wanted to make sure that he did, and he did in this release, was to really applaud Ferrero's commitment to Bloomington and, and showing their colors as, as a corporate citizen to provide this testing opportunity for our community. Says a lot about them as a company. This is, wasn't something that they had to do, but it was something that they wanted to do to help this community. And again, we're excited about this. Again, starting tomorrow, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, they will be doing a mobile testing site onsite in partnership with the state of Illinois. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Deputy City Manager Tyus. Next on the agenda is mayor's discussion. I do not have any comments or items from Mayor Renner. So, we'll just go ahead and move straight to council members' discussion. And I'll have a couple of comments there. So, Alderman Mathie. Not that you have to, sorry.
Oh, I was like, did I raise my hand? What the heck? No, I'm good. I just hope. I just hope everybody wears their mask when they're in public and wash your hands a lot.
Awesome. Thank you. Let's see here. I have Alder and Crable.
Thanks, Mayor Proton. First of all, census. Please complete the census if you haven't. And then, okay. And, and then I wanted to ask Billy. So, you talked earlier about the checking compliance without door dining, checking ADA compliance. Is there a way, like, is, is that being tracked in a way that can be made public? So that people that may want to know that for purposes of going out and dining, would know what places have been checked for accessibility and what, and others that have not or don't comply?
Um, I, I believe so. But if you would allow me to check, I, I'll, I'll do that. And the, the only reason I would, I say that is because there are instances when maybe a business honestly didn't know of what one of the requirements may have been.
Oh, sure.
To single them out as having been in non-compliance might be an issue.
Right.
But if you would let us have that conversation, those establishments that have been checked, I would think we could. But again, if you would allow me to check that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, my, my focus is more of letting people know the ones that have ADA accessibility. So. And then my second question, Billy, would be just maybe an update on, on how our direct aid is, is going with regard to the residential side of, of the CDBG funds.
Our, our last update was. Our last update was for the month of July. We have not yet collected August, but I hope to have that in the next couple of days, frankly. For the month of of July through mid-August, I think we had upwards of 200 applications, 200 plus. The bulk of those, as I've stated, get are referred because based on federal rules, we have to be the the the, we have to fill gaps. And up until probably coming up, those gaps are being filled by other establishments. I know that for the month of July, MCCA, we had 43 referrals to them as an example, which I think I provided to you.
Right.
And they had fulfilled actually 15, which doesn't sound like a lot, except that the bulk of what was left was that we needed to still get more information from people that hadn't been provided as part of the application. So they were still in process. So again, I think the important message here is that we're getting applications. The bulk of them are are referred to other entities who better serve the needs of of the population making the application. And what I will say is that once that money runs out, and it will run out, I would anticipate that we will get a lot more that we are actually filling.
Okay. And then just to follow up to that, Billy, I mean, do, are we seeing that the 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 documentation that's required as being an impediment, impediment to people obtaining aid?
That's actually, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was finished. Thank you.
That's actually a great question. One of the things that I can't overstate is that we have worked to make this as easy as we could. However, there are certain things that HUD requires of us that while we might not want to require that, they say that we have to, which, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Public may not understand the importance of that, but it's something that is required of us by the federal government. And so can I sit here and say it's as easy as it can be? Absolutely not. Because there are things that we have to collect as part of this process that's required of us. However, we have worked to make it as easy as we possibly can, and we are following up with with residents and handholding, for lack of a better way to say it, to say, hey, can you, you know, if you don't have this document, would you be able to provide this one? Or, hey, I am, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, you know, it's it's, I know that this is something that maybe is hard for you to produce, but this is why it's important. So we are doing some level of handholding to hopefully help people to get through the process.
That's good to hear, Billy. Thank you.
Sure.
Awesome. Councilmember.
Thanks, Mboka. My cat Ron isn't around. I know it's been like pet night on City Council here. Maybe he'll grace us with his presence. I doubt it, though. Yeah, so a couple of things. Number one, the mayor texted me saying his internet is down in his whole house. So he apologized for not being able to attend. And I want to take a moment here. We didn't pull it from the consent agenda item, but we did have Tim's review this meeting. And, you know, I just wanted to point out that Tim has been doing an excellent job for the city. I know that there's always room for improvement and there's discussions around different pieces. But council, I mean, we gave him the highest rating that we could. You know, we've seen Tim in action now in a crisis. He has been working constantly, consistently for the residents of Bloomington. The COVID response has gone smoothly because of Tim's leadership for not only from a financial perspective, to make sure our departments were prepared, but also from a practical, what do our residents need? How can we help? What can we do? How do we be flexible? And what Billy was just talking through is a good example of that. The outdoor dining is a great example of that, and that doesn't just happen. We don't, you don't just have a leader that steps into that type of a role. I mean, it could go in a lot of different directions. And we are, as a community, incredibly fortunate to have Tim Gleason here and very excited about his performance evaluation. And wanted to call attention to that because Tim does not often sing his own praises. It's not the kind of guy that he is, but it's worthy of public note. Just what a good job he's doing. And he would tell you that he's, thank you, and he will continue to improve. I can speak for him on that front.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Black, and I echo what you just said about our City Manager. I think he's done a a hazardous job, especially given the circumstances of COVID-19. I don't remember that I that I received a complaint for constituents talking about decreased level of service, you know, just because of this situation. So I think he has steered the ship in the right direction during this difficult time. And the credit goes also to the staff, you know, that works as well. So kudos to all of them. The other thing that I I wanted to say, just like Billy mentioned, you know, census, remind everybody to, who hasn't filled out their census yet, to to do so. Thank, thank everyone, you and me with your shirts. That is awesome. That's a very nice visual. And last thing I wanted to mention had a discussion on divesting investing regarding the oh, sorry. So where did I stop? What did you last hear?
Right as you started talking, basically.
Oh, okay, sorry. Maybe it's not meant to be. I shouldn't say anything. Okay, so let me, let me go back. So I I just wanted to commend Tim for a great job that he's done as well as the, you know, the staff, you know, who's been working under his leadership during this COVID-19 situation, because we haven't seen a decreased level of service. And I think that's, it's incredibly commendable this particular time. I also wanted to to say thank you to everyone for hearing me, you know, we're almost to to the end of the census. And so just an encouragement for everyone to to fill out the census who hasn't done so. And then the other thing that I wanted to say was that the Bloomington Human Relations Commission had a discussion on divesting, investing in regards to the police department. And I I did receive, you know, I heard a lot of, you know, good comments about the discussions, you know, particularly about the fact that, you know, people simply had a discussion. They came together, presented that a diversion point of view, but there was still an opportunity for people to exchange. And I think that is something that, you know, that's near and near to my heart, and I think that we should continue to agree on, you know, ways to do things, but we can still come together across the table and have discussions about those. So I think that concludes my comment. I don't believe we have an executive session, correct?
That is correct.
I'm looking at the system. Okay, awesome. So I guess at this moment, I will entertain a a motion to adjourn sadly.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Painter, and I believe I heard Councilmember Matthew.
Yep, that was me.
As a second. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned. We'll see you all next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Say well.
Take care.
Take care.